Please be seated. The sitting is open. For reasons duly made known to me, Judge Tomko will not sit with us in these oral proceedings. Vice President Gavorgian and Judge Robinson are unable to join us for this morning's sitting. The court meets this morning under Article 74, paragraph 3 of the Rules of Court, to hear the single round of oral argument of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana on its request for the indication of provisional measures in the case concerning the arbitral award of 3 October 1899, Guyana versus Venezuela. I shall now recall the principal steps of the procedure in the present case. On 29 March 2018, the Cooperative Republic of Guyana filed in the Registry of the Court an application instituting proceedings against the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela with respect to a dispute concerning the legal validity and binding effect of the award regarding the boundary between the colony of British Guyana and the United States of Venezuela on 3 October 1899. In its application, Guyana sought to found the court's jurisdiction under Article 36, paragraph 1 of the Statute of the Court, on Article 4, paragraph 2 of the agreement to resolve the controversy between Venezuela and the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland over the frontier between Venezuela and British Guyana, signed at Geneva on 17 February 1966. By an order of 19 June 2018, the court decided pursuant to Article 79, paragraph 2 of the Rules of Court of 14 April 1978, as amended on 1 February 2001, that in the circumstances of the case, it was necessary, first of all, to resolve the question of its jurisdiction, and that this question should accordingly be separately determined before any proceedings on the merits. By a judgment of 18 December 2020, the court found, I quote, “One, that it has jurisdiction to entertain the application filed by the Cooperative Republic of Guyana on 29 March 2018 insofar as it concerns the validity of the arbitral award of 3 October 1899 and the related question of the definitive settlement of the land boundary dispute between the Cooperative Republic of Guyana and the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela; and two, that it does not have jurisdiction to entertain the claims of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana arising from events that occurred after the signature of the Geneva Agreement,” end of quote. On 7 June 2022, within the time limit prescribed by Article 79 bis paragraph 1 of the Rules of Court, Venezuela raised a preliminary objection, which it characterized as an objection to the admissibility of the application. By a judgment dated 6 April 2023, the court rejected Venezuela's preliminary objection and found that it could adjudicate on the merits of the claims of Guyana insofar as they fell within the scope of the first subparagraph of the aforementioned operative clause of the judgment of 18 December 2020. On 30 October 2023, Guyana filed a request for the indication of provisional measures referring to Article 41 of the statute and to Articles 73 and 74 of the Rules of Court. In its request, Guyana states that on 23 October 2023, the government of Venezuela through its National Electoral Council published a list of five questions that it plans to put before the Venezuelan people on 3 December 2023 in what is referred to as a consultative referendum. According to the applicant, the purpose of this referendum is, I quote, “to obtain responses that would support Venezuela's decision to abandon the present proceedings before the court and to resort instead to unilateral measures to resolve the controversy with Guyana by formally annexing and integrating into Venezuela all of the territory at issue in these proceedings, which comprises more than two-thirds of Guyana,” end of quote. The registrar will now read out the passage from the request specifying the provisional measures which the government of Guyana is asking the court to indicate. You have the floor, Mr. Registarr.
Thank you, Madam President. I quote, “Guayana submits that the court should indicate the following provisional measures which would remain in effect until the issuance of the court's judgment on the merits. One, Venezuela shall not proceed with the consultative referendum planned for 3 December 2023 in its present form. Two, in particular, Venezuela shall not include the first, third, or fifth questions in the consultative referendum. Three, nor shall Venezuela include within the consultative referendum plan or any other public referendum any question encroaching upon the legal issues to be determined by the court in its judgment on the merits, including, but not limited to, A) the legal validity and binding effect of the 1899 award, B) sovereignty over the territory between the Essequibo River and the boundary established by the 1899 award and the 1905 agreement, and, C) the purported creation of the state of Guayana Essequiba and any associated measures, including the granting of Venezuelan citizenship and national identity cards. Four, Venezuela shall not take any actions that are intended to prepare or allow the exercise of sovereignty or de facto control over any territory that was awarded to British Guyana in the 1899 arbitral award. Five, Venezuela shall refrain from any action which might aggravate or extend the dispute before the court or make it more difficult to resolve,” end of quote. Merci, Madame La Présidente.
I thank the registrar. Immediately after the request for the indication of provisional measures was filed, the registrar transmitted an original copy thereof to the government of Venezuela. He also notified the Secretary General of the United Nations. According to Article 74, paragraph 1 of the Rules of Court, a request for the indication of provisional measures shall have priority over all other cases. Paragraph 2 of the same article states that the court shall proceed to a decision on the request as a matter of urgency. This imperative must, however, be balanced with the need to fix the date of oral proceedings in such a way as to afford the parties an opportunity to be represented at the hearings. Consequently, the parties were informed that the oral proceedings during which they could present their observations on the request for the indication of provisional measures would be held on Tuesday, 14 November 2023. Subsequently, at the request of Venezuela, the court postponed the single round of oral argument of the respondent to the morning of Wednesday, 15 November 2023. By letters dated 10 November 2023, the registrar informed the parties that the court, with reference to Article 62, paragraph 1 of its rules, had identified certain issues on which it wished to obtain further information from each party during its respective single round of oral argument. The following list of questions was attached to the registrar's letter. One, the resolution of the National Electoral Council of Venezuela, that is, Annex to the Guyana's request, Annex 1, is by its own terms remitted to the Constitutional Chamber of the Supreme Tribunal of Justice so that the latter may pronounce on the constitutionality of the five questions to be asked in the consultative referendum. Has the Constitutional Chamber of the Supreme Tribunal of Justice pronounced on this matter? And if so, what was its pronouncement and when was it issued? Two, will the consultative referendum be held on 3 December 2023 as envisaged in the resolution of the National Electoral Council? If not, has another date been set? Three, what is the legal effect under Venezuelan law of the consultative referendum? In particular, are the answers to the questions binding on the executive and legislative authorities of Venezuela? End of quote. I would now like to welcome the delegations of the parties. In particular, I recognize the Presidents of Her Excellency, Ms. Delsy Rodriguez, Executive Vice President of the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela, as well as the Agent of Guyana and the Agent of Venezuela, accompanied by members of their respective states' delegations. This morning, we will hear Guyana, which has submitted the request for the indication of provisional measures. We will hear Venezuela tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. For the purposes of this single round of oral argument, each of the parties will have available to it a sitting of one hour and a half. In this first sitting, Guyana may, if required, avail itself of a short extension beyond 11:30 a.m. today, in view of the time taken up by these introductory remarks. Before giving the floor to the Agent of Guyana, I wish to draw the attention of the parties to practice direction 11, which states as follows, I quote, “In the oral proceedings, on request for the indication of provisional measures, parties shall limit themselves to what is relevant to the criteria for the indication of provisional measures as stipulated in the statute, rules, and jurisprudence of the court. They should not enter into the merits of the case beyond what is strictly necessary for that purpose,” end of quote. I now give the floor to the Agent of Guyana, His Excellency, Mr. Carl B. Greenage. You have the floor, Excellency.
Madam President, distinguished members of the court, it is a pleasure for me to be able to appear before you on behalf of Guyana. I will begin by expressing my gratitude to the court for convening this hearing on Guyana's request for provisional measures at the earliest possible date. In the request itself and in my covering letter to the court, we underscored the urgency of the request, given the existential threat to Guyana and to more than two-thirds of its national territory that Venezuela's publicly stated plans portend. It is not an exaggeration to describe the current threat to Guyana as existential and the need for provisional measures as urgent. The referendum Venezuela has scheduled for December 3, 2023, is designed to obtain an overwhelming popular mandate for the government to reject the jurisdiction of the court, to preempt a future judgment of the court, and in so doing undermine the authority and effectiveness of the principal judicial organ of the United Nations. It is a refusal to accept the court as the means of settlement of the dispute in relation to the validity of the 1899 arbitral award and the related question of the determination of the land boundary between Guyana and Venezuela. It seeks to create a new Venezuelan state that purports to annex and incorporate into its own territory Guyana's entire Essequibo region, more than two-thirds of its national territory, and to grant Venezuelan citizenship to the population. This is what Venezuela seeks from its so-called popular referendum, as Venezuela's highest civilian and military officials have openly and audaciously declared in their public statements. What would become of Guyana's rights to the Essequibo region? These are the rights that Guyana seeks to confirm in this case, the very rights whose existence this court has twice affirmed it has jurisdiction to determine. Once Venezuela creates a new state incorporating this territory and grants Venezuelan citizenship to the population, how will this seizure of Guyana's territory be reversed if, in its judgment on the merits, the court rules that the 1899 award is valid and that Guyana is the lawful sovereign? How will Venezuela's actions be reversed and Guyana's rights to the territory be restored if Venezuela rejects the court's jurisdiction and refuses to recognize the validity of its judgment on the merits? As I stand here today, Guyana's right to over two-thirds of its territory are threatened not only by irreparable injury but by permanent loss. As I stand before the court, there is still time to act to protect the authority of the court and to stop Venezuela from carrying out its intended fait accompli before it secures the purported mandate to reject the court as the means of settlement of the dispute over which the court has already determined that it has jurisdiction, before it secures a purported mandate to turn Essequibo region into the new Venezuelan state of Guyana Essequiba and incorporate it into the map of Venezuelan territory. I cannot stress enough the urgency of the situation that brought us here today and the necessity for provisional measures to prevent irreparable and potentially permanent loss of the rights claimed by Guyana in this case. Madam President, for Guyana, the international rule of law is sacrosanct, and respect for it is indispensable to international peace and security. In Guyana's case in particular, it is essential to Guyana's territorial integrity and survival as a sovereign and independent state. In March 2018, Guyana placed its trust in the court to exercise its jurisdiction under the 1966 Geneva Agreement and the 2018 decision of the Secretary General to resolve the controversy over the validity of the 1899 arbitral award and related question of the settlement of the land boundary between Guyana and Venezuela. The court has given two judgments confirming its jurisdiction in regard to these issues. Guyana has not wavered in its trust in the court. It is the only means for achieving a just, final, and binding solution to the controversy between the two parties in accordance with international law. The court alone stands between such a solution and chaos, chaos that would threaten peace and security for Guyana and for the Caribbean region and beyond. This was underscored in a statement by Caricom issued on the 25th of October. I'll read the statement which is displayed on the screen. Caricom further notes that two of the questions approved to be posed in the referendum, if answered in the affirmative, would authorize the government of the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela to embark on the annexation of territory, which constitutes part of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, and to create a state within Venezuela known as Guyana Essequiba. Caricom confirms that international law strictly prohibits the government of one state from unilaterally seizing, annexing, or incorporating the territory of another state. An affirmative vote, as Afos said, opens the door to the possible violation of this fundamental tenet. Madam President, it would be naive to pretend that an affirmative vote in Venezuela's referendum is not inevitable, having regard to the choice of questions and their formulation. As Caricom has noted, the intention is to open the gate, a gate that Venezuela's government has already indicated in their public declarations they are eager to pass through with the popular blessing of the Venezuelan public. Only the court stands as the guardian to that gateway. Only the court can protect Guyana and its rights at issue in this case from the irreparable harm that would certainly befall it if Venezuela is permitted to cross that threshold into the seizure and incorporation of the territory, whose ultimate fate is to be determined by the court, not by the unilateral action of either of the two parties. Only the court can prevent the imminent annexation of tens of thousands of square kilometers of Guyanese territory. In these circumstances, Guyana looks to the court to safeguard these rights by applying the principles of international law faithfully, fairly, and impartially. Guyana remains steadfast in its trust that the court will do so. Madam President, members of the court, Guyana's case for the indication of provisional measures will be presented this morning by two eminent members of its legal team, Mr. Paul Reichler and Professor Allan Pelley. Mr. Reichler will address the relevant facts and context of Venezuela's impending referendum and actions planned by Venezuela in consequence of it, and he will show why it will result in irreparable prejudice for Guyana, particularly through the irrecoverable loss of the very territorial rights which are the subject of Guyana's claims before the court. And he will show that all of the specific criteria for the indication of provisional measures are satisfied here. Professor Pelley will then address and elaborate the specific provisional measures that Guyana is requesting, and he will demonstrate why each of them is both justified and urgently needed to prevent irreparable prejudice to the rights Guyana is seeking to vindicate in these proceedings. I thank you, Madam President, and distinguished members of the court, for your kind attention, and I ask that you now invite Mr. Reichler to the podium. Thank you.
I thank the Agent of Guyana for his statement, and I now invite Mr. Paul Reichler to take the floor. You have the floor, sir.
Madam President, members of the court, good morning. As always, it is an honor for me to appear before you, although I wish on this occasion it had not been necessary for me to be here or for these hearings to be held or for Guyana to be compelled urgently to seek the court's assistance in preventing incalculable and irreparable injury to the very rights that are at issue in this case, including its right to the integrity of its own national territory. Nothing less is at stake, or else Guyana would not have imposed on the court's valuable time with this request for provisional measures. Guyana's written request for provisional measures is before the court, and its contents need not be repeated aloud this morning. I will simply highlight some key points to put Venezuela's impending referendum in context and further demonstrate why it portends irreparable prejudice for Guyana, especially in the form of irrecoverable loss of the territorial rights that are the subject of these proceedings. I begin with this map. This is a map of Guyana with its Essequibo region shaded. As the court will recall, this is the territory that was determined to belong to British Guyana in the unanimous arbitral award of 3 October 1899. The land boundary between British Guyana and Venezuela, fixed by the five arbitrators, is shown in the thick black line. This is the same boundary that was subsequently demarcated by a joint commission and formally agreed to by Venezuela in 1905 and then ratified by its national congress. It is the same boundary that Venezuela consistently recognized as the international boundary with British Guyana without interruption and without formal protest until 1962. This is the territory that is now claimed by both parties to these proceedings as a result of Venezuela's belated challenge to the validity of the 1899 arbitral award and its resurrection of the same territorial claims that were rejected unanimously by the five arbitrators many decades earlier. This is the territory, the rights to which will be finally determined by the court in its judgment on the merits in this case. In particular, and for the purposes of the request for provisional measures, Guyana's rights to this territory will be determined in the judgment on the merits. These are the rights that are at urgent risk of irreparable prejudice from Venezuela's impending actions. Venezuela has made clear that the referendum it plans to hold on 3 December is for the purpose of obtaining a popular mandate to carry out actions that it has already decided to take. What are these actions? According to public statements by Venezuela's highest officials, they include the definitive and final rejection of the 1899 arbitral award, the rejection of the court's jurisdiction in defiance of its judgments of 18 December 2020 and 6 April 2023, the refusal to recognize the court as the means of settlement of its territorial dispute at the heart of this case, the annexation of the disputed territory and its incorporation into Venezuela as a new Venezuelan state, the granting of Venezuelan citizenship and national identity cards to the population, and the defense of the territory against Guyana's assertion of its rights. Venezuela has made clear that the purpose of this referendum is not merely to assess public opinion, it is to obtain popular support for decisions that the government has already made and a license to act on those decisions. This is how President Nicolas Maduro explained the referendum on 23 October. It is the first time that all the political, diplomatic, legal, historic, territorial arguments are given to our people so that we can take a collective decision as a country. The nature of that collective decision is revealed by the questions themselves, both in their form and their content. They are far from neutral, as would be the case for a true test of public opinion. Madam President, it does not take an expert on public polling to see that these five questions have been deliberately crafted so as to leave no possible outcome other than an overwhelming mandate for the government to take actions that it has already decided upon, and this is obvious in every single question. Here is the first one. Quote, “Do you agree to reject by all means, in accordance with the law, the line fraudulently imposed by the 1899 Paris arbitral award that seeks to strip us of our Guyana Essequiba? Is there any doubt that the Venezuelan public, whether or not they have ever heard of the 1899 arbitral award or know anything about its contents, will reject something said to be fraudulent that strips Venezuela of our Guyana Essequiba? But where will this inevitable rejection of the arbitral award leave the court? Will there be any role left for you to decide upon the validity of the award after the referendum produces an overwhelming popular mandate to reject it and the boundary it fraudulently imposed so that Venezuela can take back the territory that was stripped from it? Well, in case there is any doubt, Venezuela provides the court with the answer in its third question. Quote, “Are you in agreement with the historic position of Venezuela of not recognizing the jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice to resolve the Guyana Essequiba territorial controversy? There is no doubt that Venezuela's intention here is to produce another overwhelming popular mandate, this one to endorse its rejection not only of the 1899 arbitral award but of the court and whatever judgment you may ultimately issue on the merits of this case.” President Maduro himself has made this abundantly clear in this Venezuelan government video. President Maduro himself has made this abundantly clear in this Venezuelan government video.
Porque el día de hoy, Guyana metió un recurso temerario, temerario, que la Corte Internacional de Justicia, supuestamente de acuerdo a la pretensión temeraria, saque una resolución suspendiendo el referendo en consultivo constitucional de Venezuela del 3 de diciembre. Ya vamos a responder, porque para nosotros es muy claro que en el caso de la controversia de la Guayana Ezequibo, jamás Venezuela ha reconocido y jamás reconocerá a la Corte Internacional de Justicia como instancia para la atención o resolución de este tema. Jamás, jamás.
We are going to respond because for us it is very clear that in the case of the dispute over the Guyana Ezequibo, Venezuela has never recognized and will never recognize the International Court of Justice as an instance for the attention or resolution of this matter. Never, never. How can the president of Venezuela declare a month before the referendum is held that the outcome will be a rejection of the court as a means for resolution of the territorial controversy with Guyana? Have they already counted the votes? Or is the result so obviously preordained that the referendum is no more than a rubber stamp, a device to obtain popular backing for a policy decision that has already been made at the highest level of government? And what of Guyana’s rights, including its rights under the 1966 Geneva Agreement, Article 4.2, and the decision of the Secretary-General that the controversy over the validity of the 1899 arbitral award is to be resolved by the court? According to President Maduro, this right, which goes to the very core of these proceedings, will not only be irreparably injured, it will be permanently extinguished. Jamás, never, never to be respected. The same tragic fate awaits Guyana’s right to the territory comprising its Ezequibo region, more than two-thirds of its national territory, as Question 5 makes clear. “Are you in agreement with the creation of a Guyana Ezequibo state and for an accelerated plan to be developed for comprehensive attention to the present and future population of that territory that would include, among other things, the granting of Venezuelan citizenship and identity cards in conformity with the Geneva Agreement and international law, consequently incorporating said state on the map of Venezuelan territory? The outcome intended by the Venezuelan government could not be clearer. The collective decision called for here involves nothing less than the annexation of the territory in dispute in this case.” This is a textbook example of annexation. What else would we call the creation of a new Venezuelan state comprising the territory, this territory, the conferral of Venezuelan citizenship on its inhabitants, and the incorporation of the new state into Venezuelan territory? What would be the effect on Guyana’s rights in that territory, the rights it seeks to confirm in these proceedings after the annexation of the territory by Venezuela takes place? How likely is it that Venezuela will ever reverse its annexation and accept Guyana’s sovereignty over the territory, especially after it rejects the court as the means for resolution of this matter? Madam President, I wish I could say that annexation by one state of another state’s territory is a historical footnote, consigned to the period before World War II, before the creation of the United Nations, and before the adoption of a charter that has Article 2, Paragraph 4 as one of its principal foundations. Unfortunately, unlawful annexation is an infectious disease like polio, which was once thought to have been eradicated, but has reemerged, among other places, in Kuwait 30 years ago, and more recently in Ukraine and the occupied Palestinian territories. What is different here is that the court has jurisdiction and still has enough time to stop it from occurring because the intended annexation has not yet taken place. It awaits the holding of the 3-December referendum. And that is the reason Guyana submitted its request for provisional measures and asked the court to hold hearings on it at the earliest possible date. Unless the court indicates these measures, the contents of which Professor Pele will more fully describe, there can be little doubt that Guyana’s rights to the Ezequibo region, should the court find that it has such rights in its judgment on the merits, will be irreparably prejudiced if not lost forever. Venezuela has made clear that after the referendum it will count on its armed forces to defend its annexation of its new state of Guyana Ezequibo. Military preparations have already begun. This is a map which shows the location on the Venezuelan side of the international boundary, where Venezuelan Armed Forces are now constructing a military airfield to carry out the government’s plans for the Ezequibo region of Guyana. And this is an article from a Venezuelan publication quoting Colonel Juan Gutierrez Ortiz that Venezuela is building a landing strip that “will serve as a logistical support point for the integral development of the Ezequibo.” And next is a video of the actual construction work, concluding with this statement by Colonel Gutierrez Ortiz, as posted on Twitter by the chief of the Operational Strategic Command of the Venezuelan Armed Forces.
Okay, entonces vamos a ir detrás de la máquina, ¿verdad? Nosotros estamos recogiendo todo lo que va dejando las máquinas, así no le van adelante. Con la máquina solo de la parte de atrás. ¿Vamos claros?
¡Resvive, mi comandante! Coronel Juan Gutierrez Ortiz. Me encuentro en el área de desarrollo integral de La Camorra, en la construcción de la pista de aterrizaje que servirá como punto de apoyo logístico al desarrollo integral de Ezequibo.
“I am in the area of integral development of La Camorra in the construction of the airstrip that will serve as a logistical support point for the integral development of the Ezequibo.” Venezuela’s Minister of Defense, General Vladimir Padrino López, has posted a series of videos and tweets emphasizing the readiness of the Armed Forces to intervene directly following the referendum on 3 December to assert and defend Venezuela’s territorial claim to the Ezequibo region. As shown in this video.
Así que esto es un asunto que no es de derecha o de izquierda, no es un asunto de ideología política, es un asunto de sentimiento nacional, de gran sentimiento nacional. Fuerza Armada Nacional Bolivariana al combate. Fuerza Armada Nacional Bolivariana a la defensa de nuestra Venezuela y de nuestra integridad territorial. Fuerza Armada Nacional Bolivariana, vamos al combate, vamos a la lucha y vamos también a la victoria. ¡El sol de Venezuela!
¡A Ezequibo!
¡El Ezequibo!
“National Bolivarian Armed Forces to combat. National Bolivarian Armed Forces to the defense of our Venezuela and our territorial integrity. National Bolivarian Armed Forces, let’s go to combat, let’s go to the fight, let’s go also to victory. The sun of Venezuela rises in the Ezequibo. The Ezequibo is ours. We shall prevail.” Next is another tweet from Venezuela’s Minister of Defense on 24 October. “We are absolutely determined to recover our Guyana Ezequibo. We have ample historical and legal reasons. No imperial power will be able, against the will, conscience, and wisdom of an entire people, who in a consultative referendum will say five times in response to the five questions, yes, Ezequibo is ours. As the public declarations of Venezuela’s highest civilian and military leaders demonstrate, the upcoming referendum is not a purely internal matter, but an integral part of Venezuela’s plan to breach its most solemn international obligations by rejecting resolution of its territorial dispute with Guyana by the court, by ignoring and defying the court’s judgments on jurisdiction and ultimately the merits, and by resorting to unilateral action to resolve the dispute by seizing and annexing the entirety of the very territory that is the subject of these proceedings, and by extinguishing Guyana’s hopes of ever enjoying its rights to that territory. The referendum may consist of words, but they are words intended to lead directly to actions that have already been planned and announced and that Venezuela stands ready I turn to the three questions posed by the court on 10 November. Since they involve matters of Venezuelan law and procedure, our colleagues on the other side may have their own answers to these questions. For Guyana’s part, it understands, one, that the Venezuelan Supreme Court upheld the constitutionality of the referendum in a ruling issued on 31 October; two, that the government intends to go forward with the referendum as scheduled on 3 December; and three, that the results will not be legally binding under Venezuelan constitutional law. However, whether the results are legally binding or not, the government has already declared its intention to act in accordance with them and to use them as a springboard to enforce Venezuela’s purported rights in respect of the territory at issue in this case to the exclusion of Guyana’s rights in the same territory. The government has already made this clear, including in a communique issued on 24 October. “The National Assembly of the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela, in full exercise of its powers, has decided to consult the people of Venezuela on the master lines of legal, diplomatic, and political actions in order to assert the legitimate rights over the territory of the Guyana Ezequibo. The results of this consultation will thus be an assertion of Venezuela’s so-called legitimate rights: to reject the 1899 arbitral award without waiting for the court to rule on its validity, as per Question 1; to reject the court itself as the means of settlement of this dispute, as per Question 3; and to incorporate the disputed territory into a newly created Venezuelan state, as per Question 5. These are Venezuela’s publicly declared intentions. These are the actions that Venezuela is preparing to carry out. The referendum does not need to be legally binding to serve its intended purpose as an instrument to generate public enthusiasm in support of these internationally unlawful Madam President, as Guyana has shown in the written request for provisional measures that it submitted to the court on 30 October, all the elements necessary for the indication of provisional measures are present here. There is no doubt about the court’s jurisdiction, let alone prima facie jurisdiction, following the judgment of 18 December 2020 confirmed by that of 6 April 2023. There is no question about the plausibility of Guyana’s rights to the territory at issue here. Its rights are based on a unanimous arbitral award, a demarcation agreement signed and ratified by Venezuela, and Venezuela’s longstanding acceptance and acknowledgement that the territory belonged to British Guyana. Nor can there be any uncertainty about the irreparable prejudice that would befall Guyana’s rights if Venezuela were to unilaterally reject the arbitral award, reject and ignore the court and its judgments, and proceed to formally incorporate the disputed territory into itself. Urgency is shown by the impending referendum to be held less than three weeks from now, which would be the trigger for the execution of Venezuela’s annexationist plans, and by the preparations of the National Bolivarian Armed Forces to secure Venezuela’s claim to the territory. As the court has explained on various occasions, “the condition of urgency is met when the acts susceptible of causing irreparable prejudice can occur at any moment before the court makes a final decision on the case.” All the requirements for the indication of provisional measures are therefore satisfied here. Madam President, before I ask that you call Professor Pele to the podium, for the sake of completeness, I would like to briefly address the two referendum questions that I have not thus far mentioned, Questions 2 and 4. Question 2 asks, “Do you support the 1966 Geneva Agreement as the only valid legal instrument for reaching a practical solution satisfactory to Venezuela and Guyana in relation to the controversy over the Guyana Ezequibo territory?” Context is critical here. Venezuela continues to swear by the Geneva Agreement, but not the agreement as written or as interpreted by the court. According to Venezuela, the 1966 agreement requires the party to resolve the controversy only and exclusively by negotiation and by no other means. This is directly contrary to what the court ruled in its judgment of 18 December 2020, and it ignores completely Article 4.2 of the agreement, which is the basis of the court’s jurisdiction to resolve this controversy. Question 2 appears to have been designed by Venezuela to promote the fiction that it is committed to the Geneva Agreement and that Guyana is not, when in fact the reverse is true. Professor Pele will have more to say about this, and he will explain why Guyana does not believe there is need for a provisional measure specifically addressed to this question. Question 4 asks, “Do you agree to oppose, by all means, in conformity with the law, Guyana’s pretension of unilaterally making use of a sea pending de limitation illegally and in violation of international law? This question and the inevitable answer pose a grave threat to Guyana’s economic development activities in the maritime area adjacent to the Ezequibo coast. Venezuela has been issuing increasingly harsh and menacing statements against Guyana over these activities.” This is a communique issued by Venezuela on 19 September. It says that “finally, the government of the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela warns all the companies that participate in the illegal bidding process convoked by Guyana that it...” that it will apply all the necessary measures to prevent the illegitimate exploitation of the natural resources that belong to our country." This is a Venezuelan communique issued on 25 October. It accuses Guyana of, quote, "the illegal abuse of and arbitrary conduct of disposing of a territorial sea still pending delimitation," and it says that, quote, "this behavior threatens the stability of the region fed by Guyana's stubborn association with the interests of the United States Southern Command." Three days later, on 28 October, another communique stated, quote, "Venezuela denounces once again the buy-off of the entire Guyanese leadership by ExxonMobil, a transnational corporation that designs plans to threaten and attack the Venezuelan people and steals the resources that belong to them." Even more ominously, Venezuela's Minister of Defense, General Padreino Lopez, has posted a series of tweets threatening armed intervention against Guyana and its licensees in these maritime areas. This is one of them, posted on 13 October. "The cooperative republic of Guyana has undoubtedly..." Sorry, excuse me. "The cooperative republic of Guyana has granted concessions to transnationals in blocks that penetrate into spaces undoubtedly Venezuelan. Now, thanks to the forcefulness of the National Bolivarian Armed Forces in defense of our sovereignty, they can be sure that they will get a proportional response, timely and legitimate, to defend what is ours. Long live Venezuela." This is a direct threat to Guyana's rights in the maritime area adjacent to its coast. However, Guyana's request for provisional measures does not seek the court's protection of these rights. This is because it cannot, as a result of the court's judgment on jurisdiction of 18 December 2020. In that judgment, as you will recall, the court decided unanimously that it has no jurisdiction, racione temporis, over any claims arising after the entry into force of the 1966 Geneva Agreement, including the claims Guyana made in its application of 29 March 2018 concerning Venezuela's interference with its economic development activities in the sea adjacent to the Essequibo coast. As Professor Pele will explain, this is the basis on which Guyana has refrained from asking the court for a provisional measure specifically addressed to question four and the threats Venezuela has made to interfere with its activities in the sea. Because the party's maritime dispute arose after the entry into force of the Geneva Agreement and is not covered by the dispute resolution provisions of Article 4.2, Guyana has proposed to Venezuela that their respective maritime claims, including delimitation of a maritime boundary, be resolved peacefully and definitively in bilateral negotiations or by impartial international adjudication or arbitration, whichever Venezuela prefers. This could include a new case before the court, addressed to the party's maritime claims, to which they both could give their consent. Guyana's proposal is set out in its note verbal to Venezuela of 15 August 2023, which is in your judge's folders this morning. Regrettably, Venezuela has not accepted Guyana's proposal for the peaceful settlement of the maritime issues that divide them, and now, as you have seen, it is threatening to press its own claims by the use of force against Guyana and its licensees. Guyana's willingness, indeed its eagerness, to engage directly and diplomatically with Venezuela on the maritime issues stands in contrast with its unwillingness to do so on the land issues, particularly its unwillingness to agree to bilateral negotiations on the validity of the 1899 arbitral award or the settlement of the land boundary. Unlike the maritime issues, the court has ruled that it has jurisdiction over the land issues and that it will resolve them in its judgment on the merits. Guyana will do nothing to undermine these proceedings or the judgment of the court. It views Venezuela's ongoing insistence on a bilateral dialogue to settle the land issues as a ploy to evade the court's jurisdiction, diminish its authority, and trap Guyana in an endless negotiation without possibility of success. As the court is well aware, a prolonged and fruitless negotiation has already taken place in the form of a 27-year good offices process managed by the Secretary General. Guyana committed itself to that process for more than two decades and participated in it in good faith. It was because of the inability of that process to achieve any progress toward a settlement over more than a quarter century that the Secretary General in 2018 declared it a failure and chose the court as the means of settlement of the party's territorial dispute. Guyana is fully committed to having the court settle it and will continue to resist Venezuela's entreaties to abandon the court in favor of other forms of settlement. Madam President, it is notable that Venezuela's five referendum questions pay the same kind of homage to the law or international law as they do to the Geneva Agreement, which is to say to Venezuela's twisted reading of both the law and the agreement. How would it be possible, for example, to, quote, "reject by all means in accordance with the law," as in question one? The boundary fixed by the 1899 arbitral award, if the court rules that the award is valid or that the boundary should be settled in accordance with it? While piously invoking, quote, "the law," the question deliberately invites illegal behavior by Venezuela in the event of a judgment in Guyana's favor. The same legal casuistry can be found in the other questions, including especially question five. How can it be possible for Venezuela to reject the jurisdiction of the court and proceed unilaterally to convert Guyana's Essequibo region into a new Venezuelan state, grant Venezuelan citizenship to the population, carry out an accelerated plan for comprehensive attention to the present and future population, quote, "in conformity with the Geneva Agreement and international law"? By its referendum and the collective decision and action that are intended to follow it, Venezuela manifests its contempt for, not its conformity, with both the Geneva Agreement and international law. Its intended actions, spelled out in its official communiques and in the public statements of its highest civilian and military officials, are an affront to international law. Venezuela's defiance of the court, its rejection of the court's jurisdiction, and refusal to recognize it as the means of settlement of the present dispute is an affront to the rule of law itself. And its creation of a new Venezuelan state incorporating the entire Essequibo region fully usurps the rights claimed by Guyana in these proceedings, which will be irreparably injured, if not completely eviscerated, without the court's protection. In contrast to Venezuela, Guyana has taken no action, nor does it intend to take any action that would disrespect the court or prejudice the rights claimed by Venezuela to the territory at issue in this case. There is nothing that Guyana, or British Guyana before it, has done in the 124 years it has been administering the territory following the 1899 arbitral award that would prevent it from ceding the territory to Venezuela if the court were to set aside the award and establish a new boundary along the line that Venezuela now claims. Nor is there a scintilla of evidence that Guyana would adopt measures irreparably prejudicial to Venezuela's claim during the time until the court issues its final judgment on the merits. The evidence is all to the contrary. It establishes that only one party to these proceedings is acting to the irreparable prejudice of the other's rights, and that the transgressive party is Venezuela. There are thus no grounds for the indication of provisional measures against Guyana or against both parties. If Venezuela were to ask tomorrow for what it might describe as a, quote, "balanced order" with provisional measures indicated against both parties, Guyana trusts that the court will not be deterred from dispensing justice by such claims of false equivalence. Madam President, members of the court, this completes my presentation. I thank you for your kind courtesy and patient attention. Since I have no other appearances here scheduled before February, I would like to express, if I may, what a privilege and a pleasure it has been for me to appear before you, Madam President, and before Judges Benuna, Robinson, and Gvorgin, many times during your tenures on the court. I congratulate all of you on the completion of your terms and wish you all the very best. And now I ask you to call Professor Pele to the podium.
I thank Mr. Reichler, and I now invite the next speaker, Professor Lampelé, to address the court.
Madam President, members of the court, in ratifying the UN Charter, the two parties to the proceedings have resolved to save future generations from the scourge of war. In these unsettling times where the use of military forces increasingly taking precedence over the peaceful settlement of disputes despite the principle set forth in paragraph two and three of the Charter, the case before us is of special importance and far from being purely symbolic. Mr. Reichler has described the factual circumstances that led Guyana to submit their request for provisional measures to you. I will briefly go into the details of these measures. There are five of them and are in English and in French and appear in the registry's press release of the 31st of October 2023 in tab 3.1 of your folders. I will examine them in turn to show how essential they are. Madam President, firstly, Guyana requests the court to state, with legally binding effect, in accordance with your jurisprudence, that, and I'm quoting in English...
shall not proceed with the consultative referendum planned for 3 December 2023 in its present form.
This is a request that is both very general and moderate and is elucidated by what follows. You are not being asked, members of the court, to give an overall ruling on this initiative by Venezuela, however questionable it may be, or even to suspend the implementation of the resolution of 20th October 2023 as a whole. You're simply being asked to prevent it from producing irreparable effects, and that are irremediably contrary to the fundamental tenets of international law and to the maintenance of international peace and security. This would be the inevitable consequences of the referendum if it were to be held on the 3rd of December or later, as the questions are currently worded. Incidentally, Guyana's restraint does not mean that the resolution in question is acceptable in itself and independently of its current content. It is not acceptable in principle, since it is clearly intended to thwart the judgment that you will give on the merits and to make its application impossible. This is utter disregard for justice, similar to contempt of court, and should certainly be punished, especially as it comes in addition to several previous instances that do not demonstrate, the least that could be said, a firm Venezuelan commitment to orderly proceedings. I will dwell on this point as we need to deal with the most pressing issues. The reason why we're not asking you, members of the court, to sense question two envisaged by the resolution is that, despite its wording, which is full of undertones, it does not threaten international peace and security, at least prima facie, nor does it openly call into question the application of international law or the authority of the court. With regard to question four, as Mr. Reichler rightly explained, it concerns maritime activities, which you have already considered to be outside your scope of jurisdiction. The second question urges Venezuelan voters to support the 1966 Geneva Agreement, and I quote, "a valid legal instrument to reach a practical solution satisfactory to Venezuela and Guyana in relation to the controversy over the Guyana Essequiba territory." Now, with a few nuances, starting with the name of the dispute, this reflects Guyana's position, even if, as Mr. Reichler pointed out, the 1966 agreement makes no mention of a practical solution that should satisfy both states. But we readily agree that the Geneva Agreement is, without any doubt, the only legal instrument that makes it possible to resolve the dispute definitely and peacefully in the interests of both states. This is how both the Secretary General of the United Nations and the court itself interpreted it in its judgment on 18 December 2020. You're well aware of the terms, and I don't think it is necessary to go back on them, even if Venezuela, in violation of paragraph one of Article 94 of the Charter and Article 59 and 60 of the statute, persists in ignoring them. Similarly, the fourth question envisaged by the resolution does not raise any objections, if at least it is interpreted in accordance with the natural meaning of the words. There is no reason, Madam President, to prevent Venezuela from asserting its rights with regard to maritime delimitation, although, by all means, may give cause for concern. And the numerous communiques and tweets from Venezuelan political and military leaders, including those from the Ministry of Defense, strongly suggest the risk of armed intervention. That said, if Venezuela sticks to the letter of its stated intentions, the rest should be reassuring. It only intends to act in conformity with the law, which it is even keen to honor it with a capital L. We attach only... We put very limited stock to this proclaimed attachment to the law. But in any event, as the court has already found, the maritime activities to which the fourth question relates are not at issue in the current proceedings. It is nonetheless a direct threat to Guyana's rights in the maritime zone adjacent to its coast. Nevertheless, I would... Nevertheless, I would make it clear once again that the Guyanese party is not seeking to obtain from the Court the protection of its rights in the maritime area in the context of the provisional measures whose examination is bringing us together this morning. It could not do so because of the Court’s lack of jurisdiction to deal with it. I would like to point out in this regard that Guyana included in its application of 29th March 2018 a request based on the violation of its maritime rights, seeking to prevent Venezuela, and I’m quoting, “for using force against any person and/or company licensed by Guyana to engage in economic or commercial activity in Guyanese territory as determined by the 1899 Award and 1905 Agreement, or in any maritime areas pertaining to such territory over which Guyana has sovereignty or exercises sovereign rights,” and of course. But in paragraph 136 of its judgment on jurisdiction of 18th December 2020, the Court held that its jurisdiction was limited rationer temporis to the claims of either party that existed on the date of the Geneva Agreement was signed on 17th February 1966 accordingly. And as Mr. Reichler pointed out, in the operative part of paragraph 138.2, the Court decided unanimously that it does not have jurisdiction to entertain the claims of the cooperative Republic of Guyana arising from the events that occurred after the signature of the Geneva Agreement. And of course, and it is for this reason that Guyana, which itself respects your decisions, has limited the request for provisional measures to the protection of its claims concerning the land territory, the subject of the present dispute over which the Court has declared itself competent. The three other questions that Venezuela intends to put to referendum are much more worrying. If, as Venezuela expressly declares, to be its firm intention, that were to be put, and if the answers were to be in the affirmative, which there is little doubt about, this would be tantamount to rejecting in advance, in defiance of your statute, the judgment that you’re called to render. It would also result in a very serious threat to the peace and security in the region. Madam President, Venezuela’s stated intention to hold a referendum containing these three questions creates an imminent threat of irreparable harm to Guyana’s plausible rights over the Essequiba, even though these very rights are the subject of the proceedings on the merits, and your future judgment will necessarily attribute the disputed territory to one or other of the parties. Now, the first question put to the voters. Agree to reject by all means, in accordance with the law, the line fraudulently imposed by the 1899 Paris Orbital Award that seeks to strip us of our Guyana-Esequiba. Any symmetry with the fourth question to which I just referred would be misleading. It is true, heretofore Venezuela claims to be acting in accordance with the law, always graced with a capital letter, but there is an internal contradiction, and that is far more worrying here in the first question. Here, the Venezuelan government is claiming that the 1899 sentence is fraudulent, and so, and that the so-called Guyana-Esequiba belongs to Venezuela. This is precisely what is at stake in the request that Guyana submitted to you on 29th March 2018, in which it is specifically asking you firstly to confirm that the 1899 arbitral award is valid, and secondly, that Guyana enjoys full sovereignty over the territory that Venezuela refers to as Guyana-Esequiba. Moreover, all ambiguity is removed by the third question that the Venezuelan government intends to ask. ...with Venezuela’s historic position of not recognizing the jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice to resolve the Guyana-Esequiba territorial controversy. It is clear. It’s a question of reaffirming Venezuela’s refusal to recognize your jurisdiction, even though you firmly reaffirmed it on two occasions. In your 2020 judgment, you concluded that the Court has jurisdiction to entertain Guyana’s claims concerning the validity of the 1899 award on the border between British Guyana and, between the territories of the parties. End of quote. Then again, in your 2023 report, you considered that there was no obstacle, I’m quoting, exerting its jurisdiction, which is based on the application of the Geneva Agreement. End of quote. Now, the fifth question reads as follows. I don’t think it’s necessary to read it. It’s displayed on the screen, and Mr. Reichler just gave a reading. As demonstrated, the aim is quite simply to obtain approval for a thinly disguised annexation, which of course also prejudges the outcome of the proceedings brought by Guyana. The new state of Guyana-Esequiba that is to be created as a Venezuelan province corresponds very exactly to the territory recognized as Guyanese. In the 1899 ruling, which the Court is called upon to confirm by Guyana’s application, here again, the aim is to create a fait accompli before you, members of the Court. You’ve had a chance to rule on Guyana’s request, in the hope, in the obvious hope of preventing it.
These three questions turn the proceedings before the Court into a mockery that would deprive the forthcoming judgment and the authority of the Court’s decisions of any practical effect. This is why, in its second request, Guyana is asking the Court to indicate that, and I shall quote, “Venezuela shall not include the first, third, and fifth questions in the consultative referendum, should it take place.” Our third request is forward-looking. You are being asked, members of the Court, to indicate if Venezuela, with a binding force up until the time that the judgment is issued, that it can in no case include neither in the questions asked in the consultative referendum nor in any other procedure, any question that could concern or prejudge the legal questions that only the Court has jurisdiction to provide answers to in accordance with the Geneva Agreement of February 17, 1966, that Venezuela purports to uphold. This request is all the more important, that in its past behaviour, Venezuela has manoeuvred multiple times in order to prevent you from handing down a ruling on Guyana’s request. The resolution of October 20th is just the before-last episode of this legal guerrilla warfare that you, Madam President, recall the various stages in your introductory preamble. As a reminder, even before the Court had set the deadline for the filing of the memorials by the parties, the President of Venezuela had informed the President of the Court that the Court did not have jurisdiction to rule on the dispute, and that his country would not be participating in the proceedings. This did not prevent Venezuela, after having several times expressed its intention to not participate in the proceedings, to submit after the deadline a memorial on Guyana’s request concerning the Court’s jurisdiction. And then, having announced that it did not intend to participate in the oral hearings of June 30th, 2020, this did not prevent it from submitting written observations on the arguments that had been put forward by Guyana, and again, after the deadline. Subsequently, once the Court had declared that it did have jurisdiction to settle a dispute in its judgment of December 18, 2020, and once Guyana had filed its own memorial on the merits on March 8, 2022, and when Venezuela’s own memorial was expected for the 8th of March of the following year, Venezuela raised on June 7, 2022, a fairly unusual preliminary objection on immisibility, to which the Court responded in the form of its judgment of April 3, 2023. In the latest, and not the least extravagant, episode, in response to the very wise call made by the Secretary-General on November 9th, who, in the words of his spokesperson, said he was.
“Recent escalation of tension between Guyana and Venezuela over the border controversy between the two countries, and urged both parties to demonstrate good faith and avoid any action that would aggravate or extend the controversy.”
Venezuela published the following day a vitriolic press release in which it reiterated its intention irreparably to hold the referendum on December 3rd. The press release holds the Secretary-General responsible for Venezuela’s legal problems and says, and I quote.
“will divert the Venezuelan people from this path.”
This could not be any clearer. This judgment matters not one iota to us. Both of these press releases are in your folder under tabs 3.2 and 3.3. However, you know all of this, members of the Court, but if I have taken the liberty to recall this, it is simply to highlight the highly singular way in which Venezuela conceives of respect for international law, including in procedural matters. Last but not least, one can hardly ignore the idea that Venezuela is attempting by all means to evade the Court’s jurisdiction, if not to intimidate it, as if, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Court, you could be intimidated. You have heard President Maduro just a short while ago. In parallel with this unfortunate legal strategy, Venezuela, through its fully authorized representatives, has engaged in bellicose rhetoric against Guyana’s people. Mr. Reichler gave us some very topical examples, and I shan’t dwell on this. He has amply demonstrated that the threat is immediate, this is not a paper tiger, and given the almost certain affirmative answer to the questions posed in the referendum, Venezuela was effectively preparing to engage in military action. Our third request is intended to prevent the government of Venezuela from being able to rely on the artificial supposed support of the people that has been indoctrinated for two generations now to legitimize taking the actions as announced. All of these facts alert us to the need not to allow Venezuela create a fait accompli as announced in its resolution of October 20th. This would be equivalent to transposing in the form of preliminary measures that guarantees of non-repetition that you’re occasionally called upon to decide in application of paragraph B of Article 30 of the ILC Articles on State Responsibility. These measures are called for when the injured state has reason to believe that the mere restoration of the pre-existing situation does not protect it satisfactorily. This is the ILC’s commentary. Guyana has ample reason to believe that this is the case, given Venezuela’s prior attitude towards the present proceedings, and given its repeated threats to obtain through force on the ground that which it fears it will be denied by virtue of the Court’s judgment, not without reason, according to us, because after all, the Court lays down the law. In such a situation, once again, I’d like to quote the ILC, “the injured state may ask the responsible state to adopt specific measures or to act in a specified way in order to avoid repetition.” This is what we are asking of you, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Court, in the hope that by affirming this request, you will ensure that your future judgment can be enforced regardless of the position that you will take. As these requests for guarantees of non-repetition, this third measure is forward-looking and is intended to prevent further actions, unfortunately quite likely, aimed at making your future judgment non-enforceable. It would not be enforceable, Madam President, were Venezuela to follow through on its resolution in its present form, nor could your judgment be applied if Venezuela were to convene the electoral body to rule in connection with another consultation that it might organise in on one or several questions that could prejudge the solution that the Court is called upon to decide. The three examples of unacceptable questions in the list of measures required by Guyana are aimed at preventing such an outcome. They are not exhaustive, because we have simply given up to try to match the creativity displayed by Venezuela’s counsel on the means that could be devised to attempt to prevent you from exercising your jurisdiction. The fourth request put forward by Guyana, that you can also see on the screen, is in the same spirit. It aims to prevent that Venezuela take on the ground that which it fears will not be recognized by your judgment, sovereignty over the territory, that the 1899 award granted to the UK, and that has been exercised by Guyana since it became independent in 1966. In truth, everything that I’ve just said in support of our third request is also applicable to the fourth request. Here again, we are talking about preventing that force prevail over the law, that Guyana’s plausible rights be irremediably harmed, and that your judgment be eviscerated before it is even handed down. That would undeniably be the case were Venezuela to take steps aimed at exercising its sovereignty or de facto control over the territory or any part thereof that the 1899 award recognizes as belonging to the UK and then to British Guyana. This fear is not baseless. This would inevitably be the case if Venezuela, armed with an affirmative response to its biased referendum questions, would go ahead with the creation of its territory of a state, that is to say, a Venezuelan province that would be called Guyana-Esequiba, or were it to grant citizenship, or to grant ID cards to Guyanese citizens living in the territory, or were it to publish official car maps incorporating the territory into Venezuela. It would also be true were Venezuela to carry out any other administrative or enforcement measure in this territory that is administered by Guyana, in that it has been peacefully controlling for over 150 years. And this possibility is not an illusory fear. On October 3rd, the Venezuelan National Guard was patrolling the Cuyuni River in the Essequiba region, heavily armed, and claiming that “we are patrolling in our Essequiba as part of our territorial defence system. Our military troops are patrolling as a single unit, exercising our sovereignty because the son of Venezuela was born in the Essequiba.” As you heard, Essequiba is ours. Our fifth and last request, that Mr. Reichler outlined earlier, does not require any lengthy explanation. Since 1951, the Court has, on an almost routine basis, said when it’s indicating provisional measures, that the parties must ensure that. that the parties must ensure that no action is taken which might prejudice the rights of the other party in respect of the carrying out of any decision on the merits which the court may subsequently render. Indicating such a measure is for the court a way to show that it is keen to prevent any party from changing the situation on the ground, thus preventing the forthcoming judgment from producing its effect. This case calls for such a decision as a matter of utmost urgency. Venezuela's whole strategy consists precisely in engaging in multiple actions with the expected effect of aggravating and extending the dispute. However, in this case, we see no reason to bilateralise the non-aggravation measure that is being requested by Guyana. It's clear that it is only Venezuela that is engaging in actions that can aggravate, extend, or make more difficult the resolution of the dispute, and that it is considering taking new measures even more detrimental to peace and security in the region. Guyana is only seeking one thing: to bring back peace and to reduce tension and to facilitate the resolution of the dispute the court has declared or has found it has jurisdiction to entertain. There is therefore no reason to bilateralise the measure of non-aggravation that is being requested. Madam President, the clear goal of Venezuela is not only to complicate and to extend the dispute, but even to make its peaceful settlement impossible. The consultative referendum that is envisaged by the resolution is a new, clear manifestation of this determination. By putting specious questions in haste to the people of Venezuela before the court has handed down its judgment, there can be no doubt that the government of Caracas is attempting to forestall the enforcement of any forthcoming judgment by using a peremptory argument, the people's sovereignty. The preamble of the resolution states it quite clearly: Venezuelans, in whom the intransferable sovereignty resides...
...whom the untransferable sovereignty resides...
...are called upon to express the will of the people. The court should not tolerate such a ploy. I would like to thank you kindly for your attention, and I would like to ask you, Madam President, to call to the floor agents for some closing remarks and the reading of the conclusions of the Republic of Guyana.
I thank Professor Pele for his statement, and I now invite the Agent of Guyana, His Excellency Mr Carl B. Greenich, to take the floor. You have the floor, Excellency.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, members of the court, it remains for me to close Guyana's presentation this morning and to read our submissions, which are also set out in the letter I have given to the registrar in two originals. On behalf of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana and its legal team, I thank the court, starting with you, Madam President, and all the judges for giving your precious time and attention to Guyana's request for provisional measures and for convening these hearings as promptly as you did. I would also like to express our gratitude to the registrar and his outstanding staff, to the excellent interpreters, and to all the hard-working court personnel who facilitated these hearings and contributed to their efficiency. As always, Guyana places its complete confidence and trust in the court, convinced that the court will deliberately... will deliberate earnestly and respond fairly unjustly to the request that Guyana has placed before it. I shall remain available to the court pending your notice of the date for the reading of the court's order. And I will now read Guyana's submissions. For the foregoing reasons, Guyana submits that the court should indicate the following provisional measures, which would remain in effect until the issuance of the court's judgment on merits. One: Venezuela shall not proceed with a consultative referendum planned for third December two thousand and twenty-three in its present form. Two: in particular, Venezuela shall not include the first, third, or fifth questions in the consultative referendum. Three: nor shall Venezuela include within the consultative referendum planned or any other public referendum any question encroaching upon the legal issues to be determined by the court in its judgment on the merits, including, but not limited to: a) the legal validity and binding effect of the eighteen ninety-nine award; b) the sovereignty over the territory between the Essequibo River and the Bangu established by the eighteen ninety-nine award and the nineteen fifty agreement; c) the purported creation of the state of Guyana essequibo and any associated measures, including granting of Venezuelan citizenship and national identity cards. Four: Venezuela shall not take any actions that are intended to prepare or allow the exercise of sovereignty or de facto control over any territory that was awarded to British Guyana in the eighteen ninety-nine arbitral award. Venezuela shall retain... That's five: Venezuela shall refrain from any action which might aggravate or extend the dispute before the court or make it more difficult to resolve. Fifth, Madam President, members of the court, this concludes Guyana's presentation. It has once again been an honour and a privilege to appear before you. I thank you.
I thank the Agent of Guyana, whose statement brings to an end the single round of oral argument of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, as well as this morning's sitting. The court will meet again tomorrow at ten a.m. to hear the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela present its single round of oral argument. Sitting is adjourned.